Very much, we're gonna start the January 21st workshop. Roll call please.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwerer is absent. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Norby.
Here.
And Mayor Mongi.
Here.
May I please get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make, I'll make the move.
Mister, Councilmember McKenzie?
Second. I'll second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, there's one topic on the agenda tonight. Invited city engineer Morgan Dolly to discuss the, this year's street and utility improvement project. It'd be good to kinda go in more detail than we probably do, but it'd be good for the newer members to see how the process goes through and how we address things as we go along in the middle of the project. So, I will turn that over to Morgan.
Alright, thank you Brian, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present some information on this year's reconstruction project. Generally, we've been just naming these projects by the year of construction and then, street and utility is just a reference in terms of what is actually being improved and I'll provide more detail on that as we go through the slides. Hopefully, you will be able to see them on the front screen there in a little bit more detail, there are some graphics in the packet, but I do have a presentation slide deck here to run through. The slides that I've prepared for the overview here are a combination of a presentation that I gave to the city council in September, which was at the conclusion of our kind of preliminary engineering or feasibility study phase, preparing for the project. And then also folding in some information that we shared with the public at our public informational meeting. So, it's kind of non-technical in the sense that I wanted some of the newer council members and the council to be reminded of some of the things, general things that we're telling residents and communicating with them so they can be prepared for construction. Even though that's not a technical portion of the project, it is very, very important communicating with folks that actually are living out there every day through an entire summer of construction, we take that really seriously. So, I'm gonna be, there might be too much information for those of you that have maybe lived through a project, but I, I'll just kinda run through it if you think it's, you can tell me to hurry along, but also Brian told me to fill up the whole workshop, so we'll see how I do on timing. But, I should also back up, just to let you guys know that are maybe newer on the council, that the, picking a project or picking the project area is certainly, it's not random, it's something that is several years in the making, especially for this project. It goes back to something that, you know, from an engineering perspective and then working hand in hand with public works and city administration and finance, is part of something that happens on an annual basis from, in the budgeting process is looking at the capital improvement plan. And we're looking at the quantitative data in terms of the quality of our roads, the quality of our utilities, how many water breaks we're maybe getting in specific areas of the city versus other areas of the city. Places where public works know are becoming more expensive or more problematic from a maintenance standpoint to be able to take care of like underground pipes or whatever. And trying to fold that into something that is, you know, giving the city and the public a generalized roadmap for the next five to 10 years in terms of where might the project be. And those capital improvement plans or our pavement management plans where we identify neighborhoods or areas, they're not written in stone, they're subject to change, sometimes the council has some thoughts about changing them or changing the orders, sometimes staff wants to reorganize things for priority reasons. For example, if we've got a, like, again, a water main break hotspot, we might wanna bump that up or fold that into a project. But it is a very involved, ongoing process that staff takes very seriously. Also is intended to fold into other capital improvement plans by other agencies such as Ramsey County, or maybe the watershed district has got some projects that they might be doing. So, when we can, or Mindot would be another one, so where we can try to dovetail our efforts, or sometimes it's important that we come in and do our work before, like Ramsey County does an overlay project, for example. We try to do that and try to fold that into kind of that five to 10-year capital improvement plan as well, too. It started back in 2012, I think was kind of the first part of the, the modern era of North St. Paul capital, capital improvement planning. And this project that we're gonna talk about here tonight was the last project on that list, and it even got broken into two projects over time. So, as we move on into the future, I think what you will see and what you'll be considering as the decision makers for the city, is a bit of a shift in kind of focus, right? So, initially, the, this first 10 years or so of projects, a lot of them were underground utility, full reconstructs, very invasive, time-intensive, you know, takes the whole summer to do. And what we're trying to do is get through the last of those projects and trend in a direction that is more focused, because we have addressed a lot of the worst underground utility areas, focus more on pavements. Pavement preservation or, and/or pavement replacement. You'll hear about overlays, you'll hear about maintenance overlays, things that public works does that doesn't really need an engineer, that they're able to do on an ongoing basis. And I think that maybe if you followed, followed along with the budget discussions last year, and probably will get into it again this year, too. Dan, the finance director's probably mentioned, you know, well, not a pivot, but more focus on overlay or pavements as opposed to the underground utilities, which will make the projects a little bit smaller in financial size, a more economically feasible. Potentially, some of those projects will not need to be bonded for, maybe they can be paid for, you know, from a cash standpoint. All that's kind of TBD as you move into the future, but I, just to point out that we are at a little bit of an inflection point in terms of what the last 10 years have been like, like, and the focus for the last 10 years, and then maybe what the next 10 years might be like, right? So, and our hope is to, as we reallocate those dollars towards pavements is to be able to cover more real estate and have a greater, I guess, perceived impact, hopefully, with respect to the overall quality of North St. Paul's roads. That's kind of what we're trending towards, or hopeful, hopefully trying to trend towards. So, back to this project, with this slide.
Morgan, can I ask one favor?
Yes.
Because I know I was confused the first time I met you, can you introduce yourself and explain your relationship with the city?
Ah, sure, yes, absolutely, I apologize. My name is Morgan Dolly, I am the city engineer of record for North St. Paul, I've been, I'm a consultant, so I'm by contract city employ, a city engineer. I've been working with the city of North St. Paul since 2009 and the engineer of record since about 2010 or so. And the first full recon project that I was involved in as a part of this modern capital improvement plan was 2014. And there's been about a half dozen or so projects since then, more if you include overlays. And been working with several different city managers and several different public works directors, but yeah, it's been a great experience working with the city of North St. Paul since that time, so, was, was that enough kind of background? Yeah, thank you, that was a good reminder, thank you. Okay, so into, this slide shows project locations, and I thought, you may recall that I mentioned previously before that this project was split into two, and so we're showing two different colors here. Green is what is anticipated to happen in 2027 according to the capital improvement plan, so that's on the bottom there, so that's Chisholm and Masabi, and then what's happening this year is in the red, that's Buell and Gerald and Shawnee. With a little bit more detail, which I'll show in some future slides. One question that we get asked a lot is why did you kind of pick to break it into two like this? Because it looks like really there's not that many streets involved here in 2025, and that's true, but we do have some work within the park for stormwater quality, so we have some ponding that's gonna go on in there. We have a water main loop that I'll show later that goes through the park, we're gonna be replacing part of the trail there because we need the trail for construction access at the bottom of the hill. And really that breakpoint at Gerald, and then taking care of the loop on Buell, if we do that in 2025, those are streets that will not need to be driven on by heavy construction traffic in 2027. The contractor in '27 will be able to get in and out of that green area off of Raditz without needing to drive on any of our new roads, which are in the red, which will protect that investment and lengthen the lifespan of those roads. And so that was intentional to break it as we have it here, and we think that again, in 2027, we can write those project specifications such that it prohibits the contractor from getting on those brand-new roads, so that's the, that's the break. There's also a significant amount of storm sewer infrastructure on Shawnee Drive, big pipe, very large pipe, that's very expensive, and so that has been driving kind of the offset or, of cost between the two projects, and that's why it was split into two. It was because it was getting to be too much to construct in one construction season and too much from an economic feasibility standpoint to do in one year. So, back in 2020, I believe, the decision was made to break it into two on the capital improvement plan. So, this next slide again just shows a little bit more about some of the areas within the park that are gonna be worked on, northern, northern portion of the park, areas that drain towards that water treatment pond, if you wanna call it a pond, at the, at the head of the creek there. We're also gonna do some work in the parking lot for the park, so there'll be some improvements there, which I'll show in a little bit more detail. Focusing in on the surface improvements and underground utilities on Gerald, and a lot of these are the same, I won't go through every single bullet, but we're looking at full street reconstruction, brand-new curb and gutter. We do have very poor soils throughout North St. Paul, so our experience has been on some of these roads, they were originally built, you know, asphalt just kind of over a very thin layer of gravel, sometimes not much granular underneath that. Sometimes we're seeing pavements that have been laid on top of black dirt, which is definitely not good, which is one of the reasons why some of our streets are just not in great condition. So, when we fully reconstruct the road, we're actually coring out all of that bad soil and replacing it with good granular material that's free draining, that is well-compacted, and will hopefully be pushing us onto a road towards our streets lasting with good maintenance, with regular maintenance 50, 60, 70 years. And, and not being prone to a lot of, you know, potholes or other major distresses opening up in the pavement, other than some normal cracking, and cracking is normal no matter what, but staying on top of that, sealing the cracks, that's generally kind of our approach from a maintenance standpoint to protect and lengthen the life of the new pavements that have been put in and the investment that the city has made in those roadways.
When you're talking about the current state of the existing roads, I mean, how old are the roads that we're talking about?
These are actually newer than you would think, so this is early 70s, late 60s.
Okay.
Depending on what part of the neighborhood went in.
Okay.
The northern part of town, this is just anecdotally from my experience working on these different projects, soils tend to be very poor compared, more poor compared to the southern part of town or the older part of town. Some of the roads, even though they're not in great shape either, but in either north of 36 or south of 36, you know, those could have been 50s, 60s vintage, and some of them are better, some of them are not as good. Certainly, some of the utilities that we're seeing in the northern part are not great. In fact, the sanitary sewer on Gerald Avenue, we actually had to advance some sewer lining to 2022, is that the year that we did that? So, it was just getting so bad, we were having some sewer backups along that road, it was intended to do that sewer lining with this project, but we couldn't wait, right? So, some of it has been driven by utilities, not streets, but, but.
Yep.
Early 70s is kind of the, the short answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then so for underground, full replacement of the water main and water services, the sanitary sewer, as I mentioned, the main line is already lined, but we're gonna be lining the services to the, not all the way to the home, but just to the property line. That is something that we've been doing on all of our reconstruct projects to protect, again, the investment in the roads. We don't wanna leave like an old clay tile service, for example, under a road that could be subject to breaking, and then caving in, and then we got to have a contractor dig the road, even though the service is our private responsibility, we think that that's a good investment, you know, if we're gonna put millions of dollars into a road, some level of money into those older services seems to make sense. And they've performed fairly well, we've had very little problems with those on the past projects that we've utilized that in, so that's a part of the strategy there. On Shawnee specifically, I mentioned kind of significant amount of, of storm sewer pipe. We're proposing a new, I'll show additional slide on this, but some new sidewalk on the north side to connect some existing sidewalk to McKnight, and also to connect the McKnight sidewalk to the park and the park trails itself. Similar roadway reconstruction and similar where there are water and sewer services, same replacement as well, too. Buell, again, that's kind of that isolated loop that we're trying to get in and get out to protect that from any impact with the future project in 2027. Same thing, full roadway reconstruction, there is sidewalk on both sides, so usually on these projects where we've got existing sidewalk, we reconstruct the sidewalk at the same time to reset everything on the same infrastructure lifecycle clock. Upgrade all of the pedestrian ramps to current ADA requirements, that's something that doesn't exist right now, so whenever we're touching a sidewalk, we gotta bring that up to ADA compliance. And again, same thing, sewer, sewer services lining, there is some sewer reconstruction there, main line reconstruction in this area, specifically because we do have some, some sanitary sewer force main that needs to be reconstructed, and so we kind of have to do everything all at the same time. So, that's one, one area where we're not just lining the main, or not lining the main line, but we're reconstructing it. Within the park itself, as I mentioned, there's a two-inch overlay of the parking lot, which will extend the life of that parking lot, it'll look like a brand-new surface on the top, we'll re-stripe it. And, so it'll look like a brand-new lot, but we're not replacing any of the, well, there might be some spot replacement of the curb, but it's gonna be as needed, mostly just attending to the asphalt pavement in the parking lot. Again, there's a six-foot sidewalk north of the parking lot from the Batuminus Trail, the asphalt trail that's in the park, as I mentioned, up Shawnee to connect to McKnight. We have some stormwater basin expansion going on in the park, and that is all driven by Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District rules. So, every time that we disturb the subgrade for a roadway project, we're, we are triggering watershed rules that require us to build into the project some stormwater runoff treatment to improve the water quality of the water, leaving the impervious surfaces that we are reconstructing. And so, that basin was put in in 2014 for a project that was further to the east, and so the most economical approach here is to just to provide some expansion around the outside. We do have a little bit of maintenance and some erosion on some of the slopes on the sides of that basin as it sits now, so it's a kind of a nice combination of being able to address that issue and provide that water quality treatment component that's required by the watershed district all in one fell swoop. So, we'll take care of that all at the same time. Significantly, there is a new water main loop that does not currently exist, I don't know if you can see my pointer, you probab, oh, here we go.
Yeah.
This right here is going to be, it's kind of illustrating, it's not exact, but there's a gap and an easement between the homes there, between those two homes.
Yep.
We're gonna directionally drill a water main without open cut, so hopefully trying to preserve some of that side yard aesthetic for the people that live there on either side. And there's no need to drill any services or anything, this is simply a connection or a loop that, because we have water quality, drinking water now, drinking water quality complaints and issues at the end of the current dead-end line, which is at the end of, is that Wellhouse 1?
4.
4, Wellhouse number 4, which is basically right at the entrance to the park. You can't really see it very well, but it's, this is Wellhouse 4 right here, and the water main pretty much just ends right there. But we also have homes that feed off of that, and because it's a dead-end line, there's not a lot of water circulation, they might have, I don't know, brown water, or they can smell it, basically taste and odor complaints.
Jason knows all about that.
Oh, that's right, you're on a cul, sometimes on cul-de-sacs or dead-end lines, it's something that we have to, so if we do have an opportunity to take care of that with providing a loop, this is an opportunity to do that, so we've built that into the project and hopefully help the drinking water quality for those folks that are connected off that line right now. And then there's also a lift station, which is also hard to see, but that's kind of down in this area, and so that lift station was rehabilitated in 2016-ish, or 17, 17 maybe, 2017. So, the station, the pump station, the lift station itself is not really included in this project, but the force main, so that's the pipe that the, the pump station pumps into, and that, that is gonna be rehabilitated and replaced where necessary so that, again, that doesn't need to be attended to at some point in the future, so just taking care of that all at the same time. Let's see, this is another graphic that basically shows a little bit more exact detail for the water main, kind of that, where's my pointer here? Yeah, so the teal here, this is all new water main.
Now, will you have to go into McKnight Road at all when you do the replacement under piping underneath there?
No.
Is it on just, on the Shawnee?
That's a good question. Yeah, we're, at this point, we're trying to operate without needing to go into there right away even.
Right.
And we don't have any plans to, you know, they just overlay that, so we don't have any plans to go into the road.
Okay.
If we do need a permit, it'll just be for that, kind of the, the very entrance there, just to do some.
And you get, that'll all be resurfaced anyways, okay.
Now, we have in 26, 2014 or 2016, we did improve the pipes on the other side of McKnight. I think that's, replacing the pipes under McKnight is more of a project for when Ramsey County decides to reconstruct McKnight Road, which probably won't be for some time. We could have done it at this time, but it didn't seem like it was the right time, I guess, knowing that we've got everything on either side all teed up for, for when Ramsey County does reconstruct. So, we're hopeful to minimize impact to travelers and traffic.
But if they have an issue at the intersection, then it will have to be done at that point.
If there is some sort of unforeseen issue, yeah, but we're, yeah, we're, we've designed it so that we're actually building a manhole at the tie-in point, so that should be a good place to transition without any sort of major issue with the construction joint outside of a manhole, I guess. And that pertains to not just water main, but that's a good question in terms of how that's gonna work with, with the county. Fortunately, we do have multiple ways into this neighborhood, so if we are working right there off of Shawnee, we would wanna make sure that hopefully access to the park parking lot and access to the other neighborhood areas are maintained by way of Raditz or some of the other streets, right? And we'll prob, I, I have a slide on phasing, but that's something that we do try to focus on is to have the contractor move from area to area to area as opposed to working on everything at the same time, to hopefully maintain access.
Well, that would make sense, you move your equipment once if you have to.
Right, right. Now, I will mention, that's, so it's, when you say move it once, one question that we get from residents who live on these projects a lot, is why do they keep digging in the same place over and over and over again? And that's because in these urban reconstruct projects, it's because of maintaining access. So, at the end of every day, the contractors got to mostly, not in every single situation on every day, but mostly the expectation is that they're gonna get that road back to a temporary, temporary kind of gravel surface that people can drive through. And so, if it were in the middle of a farm field and nobody was living around, yes, they would probably dig one hole and they'd lay the water main and the sanitary sewer and storm sewer and everything in the same trench and then put it all back together. But because they have to kind of work in bits and pieces, people do see, people, people do see the contractor digging in the same area more than once, but that's because they have one crew put in the water main, and then they'll come with the sanitary sewer or whatever, right? So, it does, and then they have to build the road, and that's usually the last step, so it would be, look more efficient if, again, if it wasn't fully built out with a lot of homes, but that's why it appears that way, to make sure that people can get in and out as good as possible. This next slide here is showing sanitary sewer and, and that force main, I guess, as well, too, off of Buell. And that orange section there, that's the area that's already been lined for sanitary sewer. I should explain lining of sanitary sewer, so that's something that we've done very successfully in North St. Paul where it's CIPP lining is the acronym, so that's cured in-place pipe lining, that's the CIPP. Basically, what it is, is they, they have. Basically what it is, is they, they have a felt sock, if you will, that is sized exactly to the size of the pipe that they're gonna line. And that pipe might be, could be a cast iron pipe, it could be a clay pipe. Usually for sanitary sewer in North St. Paul, it's a clay pipe. And clay's, clay's great, lasts forever, but it's very prone to cracking, it's very brittle, it's prone to tree root intrusion. So what this CIPP lining does, it basically gives you, when you're all done, it gives you a new plastic, lasts for a hundred years is what I've been told by some manufacturers, pipe inside the original clay pipe. And with the extra advantage, you don't have to dig a big trench to get to it. They do it all while the pipe is underground and they access it through existing manholes. So they don't have to do a lot of digging. It's kinda nice. There's a lot of robotic camera work and inspection by, you know, the little remote control vehicles that have cameras that you can kinda pan and tilt and look at things and plan out. Sometimes add adhesive or cut, cut things off to make the pipes more amenable to the lining process. But the felt sock is measured perfectly, they pull it into the pipe, they inflate it with hot air, and that felt pi-, felt material is also soaked in like, kind of an epoxy-like heat-cured material that when the steam, the hot air goes into the, the pipe liner and inflates it and it sticks against the inside of the existing clay pipe, the heat cures it and it turns to like a rock-hard plastic kinda material and is very durable and very smooth on the inside. So the pipe does get a little tiny bit slower, smaller, but not enough to really impact the capacity of these pipes in a residential neighborhood. And good for saving trees, saving on excavation, saving to get in and out of here without people seeing one more hole dug in front of their house. So anyway, so, and, and actually, recent costs have been tracking about the same as open-cut excavation. Open cuts may be a little bit less expensive, but it seems to be a good bang for the buck in terms of what we're trying to do and take care of the residents and be respectful for access. That's with the robotic camera, so they can actually kind of look at, when they line the main line, they can actually see the little dimples or divots where the service lines are, and then they have a little robot thing that opens up a little hole for each single one. And they, they catalog that all beforehand, so they've got a plan going into it. They know exactly how many feet from manhole A to the house on the left, and so they're, they're doing all of that on the, on the fly as they're preparing it for service, mainline service, as they open that up. And that's all actually done, you know, segment by segment. People really only see a minor interruption of their sewer service. Maybe, could be as little as one hour, a couple hours, or it could be a few hours. You know, usually the contractor's out there knocking on doors, asking them, hey, we're about to line through here. Can you just not do a load of laundry? Or don't, don't run your dishwasher for a couple few hours, normal kinda, you know, flush a toilet here or there, that's usually fine. And then when they're done, then everything's back open, then they're back online. I should mention also with, when we're replacing water main, we do put in temporary above-ground water pipes. Can't do that in the winter when it's twenty below zero, but when the temperatures are normal, that is kinda the normal way to keep people on their water while we're replacing the pipes underground. So it's connected through hydrants, it's the exact same water, it's just running through different above-ground pipes and usually connected house by house to either an outside hose spigot or sometimes we have to dig down to their service and connect that way if they don't have a hose spigot. But generally, the interruption for water service on those folks is you switch from regular water to temporary water, and then when we're all done putting the new pipe in the ground, switching from temporary back to the new pipe, usually just an hour or two. I mean, pretty, pretty minor.
When you guys tear apart the, once you're down in the ground and you're going up against the sewer that goes in and out of the home, do you inspect it at the resident's side to make sure there's nothing jammed up in there or anything? Or is that a main drain service that has to be done from the inside out?
Yeah, so our contractors typically will, sometimes they do, depending on what they see from the street side. They start with the inspections from the street side with televising of the main line and then also what's called a lateral launch, cammering of the sewer service, which might go from the main line up to the house. And because they're only lining like to the property line, that's really primarily what they're focused on.
Right.
So there, we are not hiring them to verify every linear foot of their sewer service.
The resident has to understand, it's his property.
Right.
And his duty to do a main flush from his drain all the way out to the street to clean it all out.
Right, right, yes. And I think that we, if we haven't, it's very, well, I know we have on some projects. As part of our kinda pre-construction communication, like a letter that would be sent out, we might encourage that or provide them like an address of a contractor that might do that for them if they haven't already. That's something that I think I'd like to see us do.
And, and like Morgan said, when the connection to the, our main for the customer service, that's normally like when we're out cammering sewers, that's normally where we see the root balls or the root intrusion from the service lines. That's where a lot of the problems, unless they, the homeowner or resident has like an Orangeburg pipe or something like that. But back in the day when they did this work or connected it into our main, the contractors way back when, they'd knock a hole, knock clay pipe with a hammer, stick the pipe in, grow it around it, and then, you know, bury it back, bury it back. And that's where we see, I mean, you can drive, or you know, when we're ca-, or cammering those lines, you can see the roots that are in those service lines. And with, what we're doing with, we, when we line that connection, that's protecting us, that's really helping the, the homeowner out, because normally that connection is where you really see, you know.
Balls in there.
Yep, the, the roots in there. So, you know, we're, depending, you know, where the property line is, you know, we go ten, what, ten, twelve feet into the property, so.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so this next slide is showing sidewalks. I know it's not showing the split between 2025 and 2027, but this is a pretty unique neighborhood in North St. Paul where there's sidewalks on both sides of the street. You don't see that very often. Basically, the approach since the beginning is if there is an existing sidewalk, the commitment has been to reconstruct that. Sometimes they've been busted up over the years with the tree root heaving, or, so there might be some trip hazards there. I think over the years, the city certainly has looked at replacing, you know, a panel here, a panel there throughout the city sidewalk system, so this is an opportunity if you're reconstructing the roads, replacing the curb and gutter, you know, we can, we can take care of that all at the same time. Now, even though we're showing some red on McKnight, we're not touching that. That's just showing that there is a connection there. The green is what doesn't exist here today. So for whatever reason, when they were putting this development in and then, you know, late sixties, early seventies, they just stopped that sidewalk very close to the park and very close to McKnight Road, but with no way to actually get there without walking on the road, basically. So fairly minor cost in comparison with the overall project, but it's just a very easy connection we can make for those folks to get them right to the park, going to the left or right to McKnight Road to the right, which that sidewalk goes all the way up to almost 694 Bridge, and it goes all the way down. You can walk south of I-94 on that sidewalk, which I did not know, but I kept following it and you can walk a long ways on that sidewalk. So that's a viable connection. You know, this next slide is design considerations. That's something that I like to talk about, which are just kind of, you know, unique things that, every project is totally different. So the sidewalk thing is kind of a unique issue, the, the two graphics I copied in here just for reference for you folks to know that we're not operating in a vacuum here. But the, the comprehensive plan, which is something that happens every ten years, that was adopted by city council in 2018. And so we're coming up on another comprehensive plan update cycle. That's something that's mandated by the Metropolitan Council, that all cities look at their land use planning, their infrastructure planning, their transportation planning, combine it into a document that addresses current conditions and then out for the next, I think, thirty years or something like that. So the last plan, which was adopted in 2018, is the 2040 plan. We're coming up here in a couple few years embarking on updating that plan to the 2050 plan. So there's a little bit more strategic discussions that you folks might be a part of, Planning Commission might be a part of, there's generally a lot of public engagement that goes along with that. One of the chapters in that plan is sidewalks, pedestrian, you know, trails, bicyclists, that sort of thing. And so that, the connection between the park and McKnight, that was an identified connection that was in the 2040 comp plan at that time. And so having built, built that into the project, we're using that as a reference. This other one to the right, that's a little lesser-known plan at this time, but it is referenced in the comp plan, so I don't think it's invalid, and that's the Living Streets Plan. That was a document that was prepared in 2011 by our watershed district, and I think they paid for it at the time, but there was a lot of public involvement. There's some talk about trails and sidewalks and complete streets, and not all of it has, has been implemented, and no plan is intended to be implemented a hundred percent, right? A lot of it's interpretation as we get to a project. But those are just two reference points, I guess, that, that do talk about, you know, if you do have sidewalks, trying to maintain them, if there's opportunities to fill gaps, that's another theme that shows up in these plans. If you can fill a gap, that's something the city should take a look at. And so those were all kind of reference points through the sidewalk construction or sidewalk design as it pertains to this project.
Now, with sidewalks throughout the city, are the homeowners responsible for clean, cleaning each sidewalk that's in front of their home?
Yeah, by, Ron, you can weigh in too, 'cause I know we've, we've looked at this and talked about it a lot too, but by ordinance, generally with some exceptions, sidewalks in front of homes are expected to be cleared from a snow standpoint by the homeowner, adjacent homeowner.
Yep. There are, there are a couple sidewalks that we do plow. The 2020 project, or was that twenty?
Eighteen.
Eighteen project. Lake Boulevard. That sidewalk got put right on the curb line. So at that, that time, I mean, I didn't make that decision, but the decision was made for us to plow that because the wind roll from the plow would go right up on the sidewalk.
Now, the sidewalk on County Road C, Seventeenth Avenue, was that a city plow or is that a residential plow?
That's residential, and that's County Road.
Right, okay.
Yep. McKnight also. Yep.
Couple other bullet points here. I guess trees is another one. I'm going totally out of order, but Josh Bond, who's the city's forester in Public Works, has been through the whole project area, taken out some diseased and Emerald Ash Bore trees or, you know, trees that'd be at risk of dying, right, or they already had.
Yep, I, I think mo-, I think most of the trees are removed in that, in this project area. And I believe the 2027 project, I think they're pretty much, they're pretty much out.
So mostly things have been taken care of, but I guess, you know, we know through having done several of these projects that sometimes things underground are, we don't know their exact location. Sometimes something's in the way, so there's some conflict. We do expect there might be a, some, some tree removals. There's, there's one that's kind of right at the, right, right where the sidewalk ends, where the sidewalk would go through. It doesn't make much sense to kinda go all the way around it on somebody's private property. And so, you know, there's a, a tree here or there that will need to come down, there's some trees in the park. But we do build in some budget for reforestation, if you will. And so, you know, we have the opportunity under the guidance of Public Works and Josh as the forester to do some tree planting at the end when all the underground and road stuff is done. Hopefully, we can either work with a resident or work within the park to find some good locations where, you know, they won't be subject to damaging a sidewalk in the future or they won't be planted right on top of a water shut-off, which we've seen before, right? It's, it's, they're not really always kinda thinking about what's underground when they're planting the trees in the first place, but we have an opportunity to hopefully do our best to mitigate that where we can, where it makes sense. So that's something that city staff and Public Works works on with the project staff, kind of at the very end. Likely this'll, that'll be in 2026, first part of 2026. And then also the first bullet here, watershed requirements. I mentioned those are watershed rules that are kinda mandated on us, they do add cost. It all goes back to the Clean Water Act of 1974, which is a federal thing, and it's taken generations to kinda trickle down and get to this point. The intent being that it cleans the water flowing into our waters and streams and wetlands. And so, you know, there's an environmental stewardship component to that. The downside or the, the offset to that is it does cost money on our projects to, to do that. And so our approach here is to hopefully combat inflation. Things just keep getting more expensive every single year. And also economies of scale and efficiency of being all in the same place is the, you know, that, that pond expansion or enhancement that we were talking about right there in Casey Park by the Head of the Crick. We're gonna do everything that's necessary to be able to meet the requirements for both the 25 and the 2027 project in the future, ahead of time. So when we come back for the 2027 project, that part will be done, we won't have to spend any money on it. So we're spending a little bit of money ahead, but it, it'll be less expensive in 25 than it would be in 27. Plus, we'd be monkeying up grass and things that was, you know, would just planted in the park. So we're trying to do things hopefully smart.
Will this shut down the ballfields down at McKnight then for the summer?
I don't, no, not as a, no.
It will not, a parking lot?
Um, the parking, I think.
The parking lot, I don't know if that's gonna be a staging area. But as far as ball, as far as ballfields or anything, there's really not much going on down at Casey. Casey Number One, the main parking lot by the building, there's ballgames there. That mostly gets used, that parking lot gets used a lot. This back parking lot, there's not a lot of people that use that because there's no, there's really no ballfields that get u-, well, there's a ballfield right there, but it really doesn't get used. But I think for the most part, I mean, that may be a staging area for some of our equipment. So we'll have to see how things go or what, you know.
Yeah, we, we don't, in the, in the project documents, we don't wanna give away the farm too early. We, we, you know, the contractor will likely ask, they'll tour the project, they'll see that as an opportunity. It's up to the city whether they want to grant that. But I will tell ya, and I think Ron's thinking this exact same thing, is that if the contractor does have a staging area where they can park some equipment and lay out some pipe or lay out some pallets or things that are going into the streets, it cleans up the streets and it makes it much easier from a housekeeping standpoint. They have to store their stuff somewhere, and if they don't have a staging area outside of like the rights-of-way, it winds up being the rights-of-way, and that's, it's technically, legally okay, but in ter-, if that's your house and you've got like a bunch of pipe stacked in front of it for a big chunk of the summer, it is kind of annoying. So when we do have an opportunity to let them use an area, it, it might, it might be beneficial in a non-obvious way, but it might be better for everybody that lives on the project to, to do without the parking lot for the summer if we can live with that, right?
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll work it, work, work that out and talk with the contractor, find out, you know, what, what we think they'll need or what they think they'll need. Because like Morgan just said, a lot of times residents will come home and then all of a sudden, or we'll get a call and they're like, hey, we have, you know, a ten-foot-high pile of concrete curb that just ended up in our front yard. And, you know, contractor's like, wow, we need a place to start this and put this, and we, this is the closest place and, you know, it just.
Might still be within the right-of-way, but the people, I mean, rightly so, they perceive it as that's their front yard. Like, they've been mowing that for the last thirty years, right?
So, that's why I'm, I'm kinda watching, 'cause we got some kids in St. Peters that need ballfields 'cause Coleran's gonna be torn up this year.
Okay.
So they need some places to play ball this summer.
Yeah, and if we have that, if I have that information or know that that's gonna happen, you know, I'll definitely take that in, in consideration. You know, like I said, I don't automatically say, hey, you know, you can use this parking lot or use whatever we have. We have to see what's going on, but I know the past few years, those fields were not, you know, that field wasn't used. So my initial thought was, well, they're gonna come and ask for a staging area or someplace. And like Morgan said, if it's not a place that we give them, it ends up being everyone's front yards.
Unless they can work a deal out with somebody else like a church or somebody.
But, yeah, if, if that's gonna be, you know, if we have that information, it's definitely good for us to know that, so we can, you know, go about planning when we, when we do this. Because we do try to work with the residents as best as we can. We're usually out there with these projects every day. We usually end up knowing all the people in the neighborhood one way or another, just because there's a lot going on and we really, you know, pride ourselves on making sure that our residents are taken care of as well as they can be with a big undertaking that's happening in front of their house, you know, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, I always say in neighborhood meetings or when I'm talking to residents, there's just no way to candy coat a full, you know, summer of reconstruction. It's noisy and it's dusty and it's, you know, sometimes you feel the vibrations. But the, the specifications we're using, the. But the specifications we're using, the practices that contractors who do this kind of work and that are familiar with what I call an urban retrofit project, where you're trying to retrofit the streets and utilities while people are living all around you. Usually, especially if everybody is being communicative and fair with one another, they can go well. And that's one of my slides is communication. Before I get to that though, I do want to mention the phasing. So we, as I mentioned before, like we're not going to let the contractor blow everything up and then just work in one corner here while the people have, you know, no streets to drive on and they don't see any activity for, you know, two months or something like that. We like to see the contractor only remove the pavement when they're getting to a specific situation. And we haven't gotten to the point where we're, we've dictated that out in the plans and specifications yet. But again, we'll look for logical breaks or logical ways to make that happen. And generally it saves the contractor cost if they do it that way because it's their responsibility to maintain these roads through the summer. And if they're rutting and they have to constantly be putting down gravel to try to take care of it, even though they're not actively working there, that just, it costs them money and that's their responsibility. We're not paying them to maintain the roads. We say, you got to maintain the roads and the cost for that is incidental to the project, right? So they don't get paid every time they put gravel down on the road. They've got to make sure that people can get in and out of the project area.
And the best of their ability, they try to stay on top of the roads, but you know, you get a rainy year and it's all muddy.
Oh, yeah.
Be some unhappy people.
Rain is not our friend with these kinds of projects.
Has there been a bid put out yet or is that?
No, that might be next here. Uh, yeah, it's one slide after this. So construction schedule anticipated, subject to change certainly. But usually we, we see the construction start after road restrictions come off. Could be mid-May is usually when I think that's going to happen, but it could be earlier. Again, if MINDOT lifts road restrictions earlier, like they did last year was like in April, I think, right?
Cause last year was warm.
Yeah, and so if they can get going earlier so they can finish earlier, we'll let them.
Oh, yeah.
And so, but, so it could be April, but usually it's May. Substantial completion is most things are done by October or sometimes November of the same year. That means that we've got at least one lift of asphalt on the roads. So the roads are paved, all the underground work is done. And some of the maybe last things that might happen in the spring of the next year, like you see June 2026 would be the final paving, so the final layer of asphalt. Maybe some tree planting, maybe some grass growing, maybe some landscaping, little kind of miscellaneous cleanup items is usually what happens in the year following. As far to get to the bidding schedule, as you meant, you were asking about earlier. So what we're shooting for right now is to request permission from the council to authorize advertisement for bids at the second meeting in February. So we're, we're getting there, about a month away. That doesn't mean, that just means that we're getting your authorization to place an ad for the bidding process to occur. Then the plans are uploaded to virtual plan room, basically where contractors can download that and they can review it and they can put together their prices. We've been using electronic bidding the last several projects very successfully. Contractors love that. They don't have to fill out things with paper and use whiteout and whatever. It's all done online in the computer. So the bid opening, we're thinking would be March 25th, thereabouts. And then we'd be bringing the bid results to the council on April 1st with a recommendation presumably with a recommended low bidder. Per Minnesota state statute, for, at least for contracting work, over $350,000, I think is the threshold. Cities are obligated to award the contract to the low bidder, to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. And responsible and responsive, that's a whole discussion Jack can get into with, from an attorney's standpoint. Those are legal terms. But sometimes we get asked like, hey, you know, we've got a good contractor right here in town or whatever. Can they do the work? There are rules that we have to follow. Unfortunately, we can't just give work. It has to go through a process. And we do follow that in accordance with the annual financial audit that the city goes through, right? So generally we, if everything is regular with respect to the bids received, we are recommending to you the low bidder. And generally if it's a contractor that we've worked with before, or if not, we're getting references from other cities. But generally we've had pretty good luck with our publicly bid, sealed bid projects like that and the contractors that have been selected. Okay, so just right now where we are right now, I mean, the plan and the design is still, there's a little bit left to do, go here, but we're getting close to the end of estimating the costs and itemizing all the line items and all the pay items and the specifications and everything that goes into the bid package, the contract documents. But what I've represented here is showing how the entire project, which is estimated at just over $6.5 million, breaks into different components. And those different components are funded by different funds, if you will. So at the very top, streets and surface improvements, so that's what you might imagine. It's the roads, the curb and gutter, the sidewalks. Surface improvements also includes a lot of the like turf establishment or protecting things from erosion and runoff. And so that's the majority of the project or that's the biggest component at just over $2.3 million. The water main, that's just over 1.3 and the funding mechanism for that would be the water utility fund. Sanitary sewer, that's the wastewater fund, that's just over a million dollars. And then storm sewer is the surface, surface water fund. And you can see the 1.8 million dollars, that's a big component. Two things with that, we're including the water quality treatment for the 2027 project. So we're doing a little ahead there. And then also these pipes that are under Shawnee are very big. It actually conveys a pretty big chunk of the city east of McKnight through into Casey Park. And so the big pipe is more expensive than I guess an average project because we've got a fair amount of that. So again, altogether, $6.5 million. What I would say is that in the capital improvement plan, it stated that the project is to be funded by bond funds and then the bond payments, so it's just like taking out a loan, right? So, but the bond, the loan payments or the bond payments by the city for the next, whatever the period of the bond is, 20 years, for example, is pretty typical. Those principal and interest payments are made or by contributing amounts from each one of these funds. So, and the streets and surface improvements, that would generally be the, that's levy, that's from the general levy, so the general property tax levy. I don't know that we have, do we have a street fund? I don't know if there's a street fund, but, or pavement preservation is one and I think there is a street fund. But those, that's what's paying off the bond payment over 20 years is for that component. And then a little bit simpler because these are enterprise funds. They have their own revenue generating ability through the utility billing, right? And so they're not only taking in money from existing customers, but then also responsible for making these bond payments over 20 years for the individual projects. And there's existing bonds for past projects that are still being paid off. This would be proposed to be, you know, another one of those as well too. I think that may have been part of Finance Director Dan Winick's presentations to you in the past. I mentioned communication is super important and this is a slide that was shared past presentations on several past projects, but including this project. So the city has set up a dedicated phone line, like a hotline and also a dedicated email address that is communicated out to, to all the folks that live on the project. And I think the phone line, I mean, it may be answered during the day, but generally goes into a monitored voicemail box. Ava Greymert, is that how you say your last name? Grymert? Greymert, Greymert. So our communications director, Ava, is generally responsible kind of for the first cut, although she will triage and redirect questions from the public to, for example, our construction observer out in the field who has a lot of home to home and resident to resident contact during these projects. Or maybe the question needs to come to me or maybe the question needs to go to public works. So I think everything's coming into city hall first. Sometimes she's able to answer those questions and, or at least say, yep, I'll have somebody come out and meet with you or I'll get somebody on the job. But then that's being kind of transferred to people that can hopefully address their concerns in the most timely fashion. Mostly they are things that are kind of in the moment and construction related. Like, hey, there's a pile of stuff in front of my house, is that going to stay or? Or, but sometimes they're long range, longer range things. We try to flesh out by asking these questions ahead of time. Like, do you have a grad party coming up in June that we need to be prepared for? Cause we can make those accommodations if we know about them to make sure that, you know, people can get to the house, even if the roads may be a little bit dinged up, access is there. Hopefully there's parking available like adjacent on the streets or whatever. We'll try to work with those people as long as we know about them. So it's everything from the minute to maybe something more long range that we need to plan on. We've even done a wedding or there was a backyard wedding in the middle of a project and we pulled that off successfully. So we just always encourage people to, you know, if you have a problem, please let somebody know about it. If they, and sometimes, and there's nothing wrong with this, they may come to you folks. We do try to encourage them to use the proper tools, you know, email, phone, to get them in that habit. I mean, they certainly can CC you or you guys can pass information along. There's nothing wrong with that, but if we do kind of start those dialogues and those one-on-ones between staff, project staff, whether it's city staff or WSB consultant staff, whatever, then we can hopefully be successful in, you know, solving their issue and maybe gets you guys out of the middle or hopefully maybe cuts the time in, in terms of being able to address their, their issue. But usually there's a little bit of a learning period in the first part of the project. Takes a little bit to get folks used to what's going on. And then hopefully, you know, after the first couple of weeks, it, it tends to go a little bit more smoothly once people are used to it. We will probably do another, like a outside, I think, like in the parking lot, in the park, like an open house in person. That was one of the comments we got is, does it have to be Zoom and online? And that has worked well in the past because we can record it and anybody who can't make the virtual open house can just watch all the info and pick it up on their own time. But we want to be respectful of that. And so we might, you know, come March or April, like before construction, we might hold another one like out there. Hopefully the weather's nice, we can, maybe we can even have the contractor out there so they can meet some of the residents who are interested in learning more if they've got questions. I'm just going to blow through these because we're running out of time, but these are frequently asked questions that we present on every project because they're questions that get asked on every project. Access to, to my driveway if I live on the project. Generally, unless the contractor's digging or, you know, replacing a pipe or coring out the road, building the road right in front of the, the home, generally there should be a drivable surface for people to get in and out. Certainly at the end of the day and the beginning of the day, like so for folks to get out to work or if they need to come back from work so they can come into their driveway, that's what we hold the contractor to. And the contractor knows, also we get this question a lot, if there's an emergency, like if there's a house fire or there's a medical call or something like that, they know that it's their job to backfill whatever hole they got going on and allow for, you know, the fire truck to go around the hole or whatever it is. That's pretty common practice on these projects. And thankfully we're not working on an endless amount of cul-de-sacs. There are multiple ways in and out of this particular neighborhood, so that's good. And so that's for the excavation or digging right in front of the driveway. When we get towards the end of the project, we are replacing the ends of the driveways. Like we put in a new concrete apron and we maybe do a little bit of driveway work to match that in. Pouring concrete is not an overnight, it's ready to drive on, as you might imagine. I mean, people like to put their handprints and stuff and that's a whole nother issue where we try to protect that from happening. But generally it takes contract five to seven days to cure. And so at that point, most of the road is done. We've got ample room for people hopefully to park their cars outside of the driveway and on the street right in front of their house. And then the contractor will put a ribbon across the driveway and let that concrete cure out. And as soon as the contractor pulls the ribbon, then people can drive on that, that brand new concrete. Now if we're pressured for time, if we have some really urgent matters to attend to, we can use what's called high early concrete, which costs a little bit more. But in special circumstances, we've, like we've used that downtown. We'll use it in certain situations where if we really need to get those driveways poured and people driving on them right away, because, you know, there's, for example, they don't have a lot of places to park on the street in one particular part of the neighborhood. We will do that. It's not a significant additional cost. Tend to get a better product with normal concrete, so we only like to use that if we have to, but it's always there as a tool. Can entire driveways be replaced, the part of the project? So sometimes folks will be thinking, you know, I've been meaning to replace my whole driveway. The city's just doing the end of it. Maybe I should get the whole thing done. Can the city do that? As practice, generally no, we don't do that. We don't, sometimes contractors don't want to get into the liability of working on private property. They'd like to stay, stick within the right of way, which is, you know, city, not property, but city area for them to work in. Sometimes they'll do that. What we tell folks is that we will share with you all, our concrete subcontractor and our asphalt contractor. And if you would like to contact them and if they're interested or willing in getting into a relationship with private property owners, that would be perfectly fine. And once in a while that happens. Some, some folks don't want, some contractors don't want to have anything to do with it. Sometimes they're like, yeah, sure, no problem. And if they do wind up going with somebody else, we just ask them to let us know so we can coordinate. And we'd prefer that they come in and do their stuff after we're done, but maybe it makes sense to do it the other way. We just need to kind of talk about it, look at it, think, think about what's the right way and then coordinate with their contractor or let them know to let their contractor know when it would work best to work in and around our stuff. So it's still achievable, but it's just not something that the city has historically taken. I don't know of too many cities that, that do do it that way, right? But we always do get the question asked. How much of the driveways replaced? That depends on the driveway and the slope and, you know, usually it's only a couple few feet beyond that apron. If we can, you know, snap and saw cut a nice clean line in an asphalt driveway and create a nice joint there, we will. If they have an existing concrete driveway, we'll replace the concrete. We'll probably go to the next logical joint where it makes sense to just kind of cut it there. I don't think we have too many gravel driveways, but basically the policy is to replace behind the apron in kind, whatever they have now. So gravel for gravel, asphalt for asphalt, concrete for concrete. That's the approach. So it might, might be three to five feet behind the apron and the aprons are three to five feet, I think also. So generally the right of way is, I think that's another FAQ here, but it's actually the next one. The right of way is usually 60 to 66 feet wide. And that depending on how wide the road is, that's anywhere from like 10 to 14 feet off of the back of the curb as an imaginary line, right? And so we try to stay within that if we can.
Are they still going to be the same widths or they're not narrowing your roads at all, are they?
Correct, no, these are all, that's a good question. I should have said that, yes. On this particular project, no changes.
There's not going to be no cutouts or anything for the plow guys to be able to make a diptydo?
No, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll argue that all the time, but that's part of our.
On Charles Street and all that too.
Yeah, right.
Whoever did that was.
Yeah.
Was that me?
No, that was done before.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the only time where I can think of, and it wouldn't be necessarily a bump up, but we, we might change the curb line a little bit would be like for ADA purposes where the ped ramps touch down and cross the road. Sometimes it makes sense to do something a little bit different just because of the current regulations, but it shouldn't be anything substantial. And these guys always, that's one of their number one comments is, how am I going to plow this, right? And so I think if we need to adjust, we can always adjust and we try to do something that works best for everybody.
It's a curb line and that's it.
Right, right.
Yeah, we would like, Morg, our Morgan, WSB, they'll give us 30% plans. We'll sit down with Morgan, another one of their engineers, and then we'll take some of our guys that actually are out in plow trucks and, you know, plowing and we look at stuff. And we have some pretty candid conversations sometimes because the guys are like, well, I would have this or what is that? So we do, we do definitely try to look at the maintenance part of it, you know. But with these, some of these living streets plans that were put in place, you know, where there's medians and plantings and whatever. Obviously they aren't my first choice. It's maintenance, it's more stuff to go around, but we got to kind of work, you know.
Yeah, there's always those balances, right? Like aesthetics versus maintenance. Yeah, there's always those balances, right? Like aesthetics versus maintenance.
Yeah.
Cost versus, yeah, and so, um, we do try to deliver the best product that everybody's in agreement. Like, and so one maintenance thing that we're building in, it's kind of a minor detail, but I mentioned that lift station in Casey Lake Park. Where we have to, contractor's gonna access that area by the asphalt trail that's, uh, on the north end of the park there that people use for walking now. So, you know, that's gonna get scuffed up and we're already planning to repave that. But at the end of that area, um, there's an opportunity to kind of redo how that trail fits around the lift station for access to the pumps, access to the hatches. And so we're trying to do, um, a minor improvement there. It's not for plowing purposes, but to hopefully make it a little bit easier for the guys to get at the lift station and maintain the lift station.
Yep, just to get our jetter truck in there and be able to turn around and go in and come out the same way that we went in, just cause it's such a big truck. You know, overbuild that path a little bit so it'll handle that truck and just for maintenance standpoint.
Yeah. Um, mail and trash, I mean, the short answer of that version, eh, or short version of that answer is that if they're, now I can't remember this neighborhood, if it's home service, if they got mailboxes. But if there are mailboxes, those get pulled out at the front end of the project and we put in kind of a group mailbox in a location that's usually dictated by the postmaster. Sometimes we get into arguments with the postmaster about where it should go. But they have to make that location work with their routing and where the mail carrier is gonna drop all the mail. So people will have to pick up their mail in a different location, usually for the majority of the summer. And then when everything's done, we will either put their originally salvaged mailbox, if they wanna keep it back. Or sometimes if, you know, we need to put a new post in and put their old mailbox, or if it's totally busted up, we can give them a kind of, you know, standard mailbox to replace the one that was there before. And for trash, uh, usually things are supposed to operate on trash day like they normally do. People should just leave their bins out at the end of the driveway or wherever they normally do, but it's the contractor's responsibility because sometimes the trash hauler can't get in the same way. So heat the trash hauler. There's a point of coordination. Usually, this is one of the bumps in the road at the early part of the project. Usually we figure it out. Trash hauler might be, need to come in and turn around, uh, like at the parking lot at Shawnee. Contractor's responsibility is to come and pick up all the trash bins at the ends of the driveways. Usually we ask people to put a piece of duct tape with their address number on the bin so they come back to the same place. And the contractor will run those bins up to the trash hauler with a skid steer or something, empty them out and then bring the, bring the empty bins back. So trying to make it hopefully, uh, as close to similar as normal, just sometimes the trash hauling truck isn't actually able to come right to the end of the driveway. And again, that, those are other things that contractor's not getting paid extra for that. They know it's written into the specifications. That's what you gotta do. It's incidental to the project. Work hours, seven to seven, Monday through Friday, uh, and Saturday, nine to five. Not always do we see the contractor working on Saturdays. Usually they're not interested in paying their, uh, folks overtime unless they're really getting pinched on schedule. So usually we don't see them work on Saturdays. They have to ask permission on a Sunday or a holiday or overnight work. Once in a great while, that makes sense. I don't foresee it happening on this project, but sometimes you see that, uh, because of, you know, like if it were McKnight Road and it's a busy road and sometimes it makes sense to do some night work. But for this, I think we'll probably have a pretty standard, Monday through Friday, seven to seven. Sometimes contractors can cheat that and they like to show up at five in the morning and maybe they'll start their diesels warming up at six in the morning and that's not okay. Yeah, and so we, we tell them like, you don't start your trucks until seven. That's what it says. Sometimes they cheat that and we gotta yell at them and then, so anyway, and you know, if we do hear that, um, yeah, we know they're not supposed to. They get told at the pre-construction conference, that's not acceptable. Sometimes they have subcontractors and people that aren't underneath the prime contractor's thumb that need to be reminded. So once in a great while, that's another blip in the road that we need to address. And then areas of lawn, so that's kind of been a big one. Right now, uh, we, the best approach is to replace any disturbed lawn area with sod. Industry standard for sod is that the contractor waters it, maintains it for thirty days. And then after that time, the, it's the homeowner's responsibility to take care of it. And we give them a flyer that says, do not cut your brand new sod short. You will kill it. And then there's nothing we can do about it. And we tell them, like mowing short is, uh, one of them. Oh, and then, uh, and, and if it gets really dry or hot after the sod goes in, water it. Like, uh, esp- and, and if people are still on their temporary water, that bypasses their water meter and so water is free. So hopefully, you know, people, but they, you know, generally wanna make sure that the grass takes as well as it can. Once in a while we have to go back the next spring and maybe replace a couple areas that might've died. And we've made some minor exceptions, but, um, we do try to stick with that, knowing that we have communicated with everybody to say, hey, thirty days, this is when you guys gotta take it over. Here's all of the best ways to take care of it. Don't cut it too short. Make sure you're watering it. So we're trying to give them all the best information and it's worked pretty well. Minor, minor issues. Once in a while we have to replace a little bit here, a little bit there, and that might have to be at cost. But to try to keep folks happy and keep them, um, as calm as can be after having lived through an entire summer of a lot of heavy construction. I think, again, those are some of the exceptions that if we think it's justified, we'll try to take care of that. We don't wanna be too undue with the, the burden here. And growing grass is one of the last things to happen.
Yeah.
It's six twenty-eight. If we can.
All right.
Couple seconds before we start the six thirty, that'd be great.
I think I've already mentioned the other things here about storage, uh, changes to the road, you know, irrigation and landscaping. I mean, we try to protect that where we can and if they do need to come out or be repaired, again, we, we work with the contractor to take care of that, so. Oh, go ahead.
Just one thing quick. We, once this project gets going, we have weekly meetings with the contract, contractors out there on site. So if there's stuff that you guys hear, you know, questions, I mean, we meet with them weekly. So, you know, like the, starting early or if they're starting their trucks early, we meet with them on a weekly basis to go over things to, you know, try to keep things on track. So.
Yep.
That is something we do throughout the project until we deem that, you know, we're at a spot where that doesn't need to be done anymore.
And on these projects, really, we usually have to have those weekly meetings all the way until the season ends, right? I mean, just in case something comes up.
Sure.
So it's a, a lot of communication, not just with the residents, but the contractor also.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
You guys can call me anytime or, um, if you have other follow-up questions, I'm always available.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Call for adjournment?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Norby, second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, seven, uh, to come back at six thirty-five. Give us five minutes.